Call to order, the regular meeting here at the City Council of City Rans Pass at 600 West Cleveland Boulevard. April 4th, 2016, 7:00 PM. All rise for the invocation, please. Lord, we'd like to give you thanks for this beautiful day. We ask you to watch and guide us as we go after this meeting. We ask you to watch and guide our citizens in here. We ask you to open, have everybody have an open heart, open mind as things are being discussed. We ask you, we give you thanks for all the beauty that's given to us each day, sometimes taken for granted. We ask you with your guidance in your hands to guide City Rans Pass. Thank you, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to put as an item number three, which item 3A would be outstanding volunteer, which goes to Captain Billy. Culture, excuse me, apologize for that. If he's present, would you please step out? I'm going to read this up real quick. Oh, she, I'm sorry, I apologize. Captain Billy has been a fishing guide for eight years. Although she lives in Rockport, she fishes Redfish Bay launching her boat from Hampton's Landing. Captain Billy is known for fishing only with artificial lures. Captain Billy also attends fishing expos throughout the state with both and seminars to promote her fishing trips. In March, she attended the Houston Fishing and Hunting Show and held at the same time as the rodeo did. And it's also known to be the largest show in the nation. Captain Billy offered to take any handouts for Rans Pass to promote the city for her booth. The city provided the North Bay maps, bags, rack cards, Rans Pass PD pigs and pins. The chamber visitors center provided booklets and pamphlets and rack of cards. Captain Billy reported that she manned her booth for five days and estimated eighty thousand persons attended that show. That's excellent. During her seminars, she had some, she had standing room only and one of them was fishing in Redfish Bay with top water lures. She received a good feedback from her booth and visitors from about Aransas Pass and they loved all the information, especially the maps. She booked twenty-five trips, four of which are by the middle of April. Captain Billy was not asked to provide this promotional activity but made this call on herself to volunteer the way she could help. There was no cost to the city or the chambers since she paid her own booth fees and travel expenses. This creative thank is an example of how anyone can help promote Aransas Pass. And we are recognizing her today for being an outstanding volunteer. And I do apologize. Is there something you would like to add to this or anything?
Uh, no sir. Thank you.
A lot of things that go through the Navy too and stuff come out, but what she has done is one of those, you know, a bunch of things.
Thank you, thank you so much. I do have one thing to say though. Don't think about it, I do. Um, my name is Captain Billy Toshin. I've been in this area for sixteen years and I have struggled with getting to be a hunter with passion, but I do know that this story is important. And it wasn't for my skill, my coaching, I was too young at that. Uh, I've been there. I hear a lot of speakings for all the schools, Aransas Pass, Rockport, Portland, and all them. And I speak to all these kids because it affects our kids and our sea life. And what's happening down here, people couldn't have fun and they're affecting our sea life down here. So we need all of y'all to step aboard and help us fishing guides, which I'm wanting to take over up there first because that's how I make my living. To educate them on our basis, that's real important. But we got to educate our kids. Because we saw our kids being on the TV, or the radio, whatever. I have eight great children of my own and they all fish our fishing. And so that's what we need y'all to help on, is to get our kids more outside into the sea life and understand what's going on in our basis. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Yeah, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This brings us time with 3B. Sylvia?
Uh, Mayor, this council meeting, we'd like to recognize our finance director Donna Cox. Often a very thankful job, all of the vendors, not including the staff, internal staff who were wrecking about. Either they're getting back to recognition, not having her signature, whatever, whatever. Donna's, Donna's, you know, really, really hard to crack. And once you get a pass out of the exterior, she's really softy. So, uh, she's really done an excellent job transitioning all of the financial software, our website, which is still up and coming, bringing the staff along, although kicking and screaming. You can hear it down the hall. I try to go and go through my door. But thank you very much, Donna, for all of the thankless, thankless hours. She didn't know she was on the agenda tonight.
Really? This is going to bring us time to 3C, a resolution of number 2016-778, resolution honoring the Coastal Bend Council of Governments on the 50th anniversary. Let's see, let me go ahead and read this out if I can get this out. It says, "Resolution honoring the Coastal Bend Council of Governments on its 50th anniversary. Whereas the Coastal Bend Council of Governments is a volunteer association with local governments, including thirty-two cities, eleven counties, and other public and private entities. Whereas the Coastal Bend Council of Governments, one of twenty-four regional COGs serving the state of Texas, which were authorized by the Texas Regional Planning Act of nineteen sixty-five. And whereas the Coastal Bend Council of Governments was formed in March nineteen sixty-six, God bless you, provide a cost-effective way to plan, coordinate, implement regional projects, and provide technical assistance with the region. And whereas the Coastal Bend Council of Governments is designated area agency on Asian economic development, God bless you. Development district, a designated water quality management agency, and provides regional solid waste management, planning, coordination, and inflammation of projects. And whereas the Coastal Bend Council of Government also delivers criminal justice services, emergency communications as nine-one-one, planning implementation, and the Department of Homeland Security and services. Whereas numerous advisory committees are integral to the program, work performed by the Coastal Bend Council and Governments. Whereas the Coastal Bend Council of Governments is staffed by approximately twenty-five dedicated individuals, many of whom have been devoted decades to the mission and goals of the Council and Governments, including four employees that have been combined there for one hundred and seventy-five years of experience. John Buckner has forty-five years, Frank Garcia has forty-three years, Reg Ballack has forty-three years, and Betty Lamb has forty-three years. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City of Rans Pass hereby honors the Coastal Bend Council of Governments on its 50th anniversary and expresses sincere appreciation of the Coastal Bend Council of Governments and its dedicated employees for their years of public service, and extend the best wishes for continued success in their important work. And before it is resolved that any official copy of this resolution be prepared for the Coastal Bend Council of Governments as an expression of a high regard by the City of Rans Pass, not that this day, the fourth day of April, twenty sixteen. Myself, the City Council here and the City Secretary, Mayor Wallace. So we appreciate all their years of experience and dedication of time that they put in. So we say thank you. This is going to move us to item number five, our citizen comments. You have three minutes to state your name, full address, and anything you would like to say. And please speak clearly into the microphone because it will be recorded. So the floor is now open to anybody willing to say anything.
And, um, first of all, I just want to thank Sylvia Carrillo and Mr. Arbor Master Chuck West for providing their divided attention in a matter that, well, it's not a matter, it's just something that I want to do. And it's a casino project that I've been working on for about two years now. And it's kind of taken different faces and different turns and investors in, investors out. And finally, I was able to obtain property right next to mansion by the sea here in Aransas Pass, it's waterfront. But with that being said, it's going to be about, you know, it could be an indefinite time as to when I'll get all the permits that I need to be able to operate and I'm telling my, like, quirk engineers and then of course, building permits, you know, through the City of Aransas Pass. So with that being said, you know, I've started looking at Con Brown Harbor. I understand that there was a big project that was going to take place there and then kind of maybe things, it's not going through anymore. And basically what I'd like to do is utilize some area there. We kind of discussed more or less what general area. And dock a casino ship out of there while I still obtain my permitting for my personal property. And once the permits are there, maybe sign like a three-year deal with the city to utilize Con Brown for, again, for casino ship docking purposes until my permits are done and then I'd like to. I've got a lot of aspirations for this area that I want to do business-wise. And I guess, you know, that will, I don't want to get too ahead of myself, but you know, hotel with casino ship combination is the ultimate thing that I'd like to make come to fruition.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
So I just wanted to address, address y'all and I know that I'll continue to discuss this more with Sylvia and Mr. West. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to have a comment or anything? If not, that will close our citizen comments, we'll be moving on. This brings us to item number six, the consent agenda. All of the following of the consent agenda considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless so a council member so requests. If the discussion is so desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. We have items six, A, B, C, D, and E. And that's it.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item seven, considering that the city manager item. Sylvia, how do you make?
Uh, Mayor and Council, we have with us tonight two members of our bond council who are going to talk to us about a refunding opportunity for some current certificates of obligation that we have outstanding. As you're aware, we issued, you may or may not be aware, some of you weren't on the council. In two thousand and seven, there were a series of taxable bonds that were issued for the purchase of land property, including LWR and some other parcels. Our credit rating has improved, our financial standing has improved, and those bonds were issued at over six percent interest rate, which refunding those bonds at today's interest rate would result in a substantial savings, huge. And then also free up some additional funds for other projects the city may want to embark on at no increase in the payment, no increase in the term. So.
Thank you. My name's Mark McLean, I'm with Samco Capital Markets, worked with the city for twenty, twenty-five years. My partner, Andrew Friedman, who make the presentation. We brought Tom St. John, he's a new associate, just graduated from Texas A&amp;M and is part of the team now. So we wanted him to come down here for one of his first meetings with the Rans Pass.
We won't hold that against you.
I was going to say that. Hey, hey, wait a minute.
The refunding, but Sylvia did, and we were, we've been working with Sylvia on this for some time. We had to issue the bonds taxable because we were buying it from the state, we were making improvements, and we thought we could clean it up and get it sold quickly. Well, it kept taking longer and longer. Well, now the bonds are callable. We can take them from the investor and refinance it, just changing the interest rate. So Andrew's going to go through that with you, go through a timetable, and then also show you how your debt is structured so that new bonds could be issued later this summer for other capital improvements unrelated without changing your tax rate. And Mary, did you get a copy of this for your record too? Oh, you did get it.
Good evening. I handed out at each of your seats, three-page handout that reviews the refunding, the timing of this proposed transaction, and potential new money issue. So starting on that first page, there's three boxes. The top box there, the summary of bonds to be refunded outlines, we're looking at, as Mark said, taxable certificates of obligation, Series 2007. We have just over four and a half million dollars outstanding that we can call from the investor. And that rate is at six point three seven five percent and they're callable anytime after June 1st, 2016. You look down the box below that on the left is just a summary of this proposed transaction. We're going to replace that interest rate of six point three seven five, roughly three percent. And that's subject to change. We would go out and bid to all of our local banks and regional banks that are buying taxable municipal bonds, go out and solicit them for a bid, likely receive, we'd solicit over twenty banks and receive a handful of bids. The city would award the bid to the lowest rate and it's subject to your approval. If we get rates that we don't like, throw them all out. There's no commitment by the city in moving forward this evening. You're not committing any funds, you're not committing yourselves to this refunding, just to go out and solicit for them. Right now, the taxable bond market, we're thinking just over three percent would be a rate we would likely receive. That would generate savings of over seven hundred thousand dollars to the city. Fifteen point six two percent present value savings. We use that as a benchmark and a metric. We look at refundings, especially current refundings, anything over three or five percent as being something that is a positive for the city. So to be at fifteen percent is really a no-brainer, saving a substantial amount of money. We're not increasing the term, we're just going to match these bonds for bond, just like when you refinance your home mortgage. We're not increasing the term, we're not borrowing any more money. We're just going to replace one interest rate with a lower interest rate because the interest rate market is so much more aggressive and lower than it was back in two thousand and seven when we've bonds were issued. And then the box on the right details what that annual savings would look like for the city.
Excuse me, hold on. Mary, this thing's about to run out of memory. The battery's good, but I think.
Memory.
Memory. I'm sorry about that, sir. When I hear something beep, it gets my attention. We do have it on.
Yes, live stream is on. Just speak clearly into the mic.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. The third box on the right details your annual savings. So the city would look to save, and that's the fourth column from the left there, roughly seventy-four to seventy-five thousand dollars a year between the years, fiscal years twenty seventeen through final maturity in twenty twenty-seven. Again, for a gross savings, eight hundred and seventeen thousand on a present value basis, that's seven hundred and four thousand. The second page outlines a proposed timetable, you can see, starting from the top. April 4th, getting a green light, permission to proceed from you all to allow staff and to allow us and bond council to go out, put together a private placement memorandum, and solicit investors for these taxable general obligation refunding bonds, two thousand and sixteen. We would then be back on May 2nd with those final interest rates in hand. We would know the exact savings at that time and that would give the council the ability to vote up or down on those interest rates at that time. And then we would close on June 1st of two thousand and sixteen, that is the date that the bonds become callable. The third page, and this is outside of the refunding discussion, but it's pertinent because we're getting near your budget and we're going to be setting our tax rates. And we wanted to take a look at our overall debt portfolio of bonds and debt service that's supported by your interest in sinking taxes. Lot of numbers on this page. On the far left, you can see we're looking at fiscal year, starting in two thousand and fifteen to give us a historical perspective of our, and then to the right of that, our taxable assessed value. And you can see that at two thousand and sixteen, our taxable value is at five hundred and ninety-one million. And we've assumed that we're not going to see any growth over the next twenty years. Of course, we'd hope to see more growth, but we do this. Of course, we'd hope to see more growth, but we do this on a conservative basis so that we know hopefully what our worst-case scenario would be. To the right of that, we've got our existing debt service, and then we backed out the savings from the refunding that we've just talked about to arrive at what we believe our new existing debt service would be, and what our tax rate ultimately would be if we don't issue more bonds. And so you can see, the very far right column, our INS tax rate required. So for 2015, we're at 34 cents. And this doesn't exactly equal what we actually set our interest in sinking tax rate at, because there's a couple of other minor assumptions, but these fall roughly in line. 34 cents, we decreased over the prior year to 31 cents. And as you look forward, we would see that decrease even more, going down to 26 cents in 2018, and then finally down to 18 cents in 2024. What that does, and we have a stair step built into our debt service, the city can issue certificates of obligation for capital improvements, to fund capital improvements without increasing our INS tax rate required. And so it allows us every few years, then done intentionally over a number of years, to build those stair steps in so we can fund capital improvements without raising tax rates. And we have that opportunity here. We have modeled in $3 million in certificates of obligation that could be issued this summer. Before we set our tax rate, it will allow us to fund $3 million that you all, for projects you all deem and agree to, over the next couple of months. And then that will allow you to take this new debt service into consideration while you set your tax rate and adopt your budget later in the summer. So we wanted to provide this to you for informational purposes as you all get into those discussions. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have or go into more detail over these numbers, the refunding analysis, or this last page on tax rate impact analysis.
Thank you. I'm good. Karen? We're good, sir. Thank you.
You're safe.
Thank you, Andrew.
I think in order for us to go out and bid this and bring it back in May, we'll need you all to authorize us to move forward.
Right, that's where we're going to move on. Do I hear a motion for approval for item 7A?
I make a motion, we approve item 7A.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Get to work.
All right. Let's bring us to item 7B.
Mayor and council, part of our improvements at Community Park, which still remain the slab for, on the Shrimpery Grounds, the slab for the skate park, and also the dog park, require some electrical service. There's been a delay because AEP does not have a blanket easement down there, and we don't have a specific location for those items contingent upon some surveys because it is in a floodway, so we've got to be very careful where we put them. So as opposed to coming back and forth and spending survey money, we offered to give AEP a blanket easement, which would allow them to put the electrical service anywhere we basically need it, that's more appropriate for each of the items that we need to build, and then leave ourselves room for expansion of those items.
Is that also, we're still talking about redoing those two softball fields or not?
Correct, it's upgrading. Once we do this, we can allow AEP to come and upgrade electrical service without having to touch, you know, all of our existing easements with AEP. There's about three down there, and one of them is in a place, I'm not sure why it was granted, other than there was a field at one time proposed there.
Is there any question from council on item 7B? Do I hear a motion for approval for item 7B?
I make a motion, we approve item 7B. Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
I need to ask a quick question.
Alan, would I have a problem since my husband works for AEP?
No.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Does it bring us to item 7C?
Mayor and council, this would be our third annual fireworks production with Western Enterprises, 4th of July, down at Community Park. It's not going to be on the 4th of July, however. If council approves the item, it is slated to be July the 2nd. The Keywood Show is scheduled for July the 3rd, and Rockport and a couple of other cities are scheduled for July the 4th. So as opposed to being in competition with our surrounding neighbors, we opted for a July 2nd date.
It will still be at the Community Park.
It will still be at Community Park, there will still be free hot dogs, all of the activities for the kids are still planned.
And that's that first Saturday, correct?
Yes, that is the very first Saturday of July.
Any questions from council? Do I hear a motion for approval for item 7C?
While I make a motion, we approve the 2016 fireworks production contract between the City of Aransas Pass and Western Enterprises, Inc.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Let's bring us to item 7D.
Mayor and council, this is part of all of the economic development that's occurring in our area. It would not happen without the La Quinta Channel. The restore grant as part of the BP oil spill has freed up some money. The Port of Corpus Christi is pursuing $7.5 million of that money to create a gateway terminal in the La Quinta Channel. They're seeking letters of support from the surrounding jurisdictions. This is, I need council action to be able to submit the letter of support.
Any questions from council? Do I hear a motion for approval for item 7D?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve item 7D.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Bigger and deeper port just means more and more work in our area.
Item 7E, Sylvia?
7E is, I wanted to give the council an opportunity to give staff direction on the softball field operations. Our current, Lessey Roland Peña, has submitted a letter to the council on his desire to continue softball operations. We do have, attached that letter, we do have another person who has requested to operate the softball field. Staff has not entered into conversation with either one of the parties because, quite frankly, I need staff, I need council direction in order to be able to go out for bids, if that's what the council so desires.
So it's just no conversation with Mr. Lozano at all?
We've not had any conversation.
I guess just as a, just to be fair to him and just to have a conversation with both of them, that's what I would recommend.
Well, in order for us to have a conversation with them, it's going to open up the field for anybody, so that's why we would go out for a proposal, a bid proposal. We have more, we have more tangible information in terms of how much trash costs, electricity costs, and water costs down in the softball field, so all of those things would be considered and hopefully not operated at a loss.
While I make a motion that we go out for RFP on the softball field operations.
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it bring us to item 8A, considering that the sponsorship request, the Aransas Pass Youth.
Oh, sorry, I'm going to take over this item as well. AP for Youth amended their request after meeting with the board and our police chief and the surrounding public safety agencies stepped up. What they've offered is they will take the pool on the Tuesday that we're closed, so it'll offset any revenue loss, and it'll have minimum staffing requirements. The PD and surrounding jurisdictions will have Public Safety Day down at McCambe Park. So we're coordinating with our Parks and Rec Department to make sure the pavilion is free for use that particular Friday, as well as making sure our water and things are available. They're going to have a variety of softball game, kickball games, and things planned, so.
Is there any question from council? Do I hear a motion for approval for item 8A?
I make a motion, we approve item 8A. Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Mary, I abstain because my husband serves on the board.
This is going to knock us all the way down to item 13A, Mr. Lawrence?
Mayor, these items were tabled by the council on March of 7th, so we need a motion to untable.
Do I hear a motion to untable these items, 13A?
I make a motion, we untable item 13A. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that done, I would pass this on to city manager, she has some comments she'd like to make to you before we open the public hearing.
Mayor and council, the discussion of non-conforming uses really was muddied in non-conforming use versus non-conforming structure. We had a city council candidate request a meeting with staff, we opened up that meeting to all of the council candidates. We had a good showing of the public, as well as some planning commission members and other board and committee members for the city. They have requested some items be incorporated into this ordinance, including the non-conforming use being able to be kept as long as an inspection can be passed. So what I'd like the council to do is remand it back to the planning commission to continue the conversation and craft that ordinance the way the public would like to see that ordinance crafted, while still maintaining the integrity of non-conforming uses.
The standard of manufactured home or whatever it is.
Correct, and that's, the way the ordinance is written now is you can replace a manufactured home so long as it's not 10 years of the way we're going to craft the ordinance. The issue became more of a structure, when the structure has become substandard, or the way the ordinance was proposed, the example that was brought up was that if somebody owns, somebody lives in an RV or mobile home, but they're winter Texans, for example, and they're away for a good portion, and maybe something keeps them up north, and the structure's perfectly fine, they just haven't occupied it in a year. Well, the way it was written, it would lose its grandfathered non-conforming use status. So what they've asked us to go back and do is if the structure's perfectly fine and it passes inspection and it's not causing a detriment to the neighborhood, allow that use to continue. Well, again, the use is okay, a residential use, the structure has to pass the inspection. And so we've got to clear those things up in the way the ordinance language is proposed.
Well, with that, mayor, I would recommend you accept the manager's recommendation and that you pass a motion to that effect and remand it to P&amp;Z.
Okay, so we just close the public.
There's no action on A and B, the only action is to send it back to Planning and Zoning.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion for that?
I make a motion, we send it back to Planning and Zoning.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sylvia, item 14A.
Well, we've got, we've got a couple of items that have been working on, there's a couple of good news items. First of all, we, there's been a lot of discussion on the transparency for the budget and all of those good things. We have a lot of open records requests. So what we launched this year was something called Balancing Act, and we're calling it Accountable AP. And it's basically every line item in the budget, along with the revenue source, this is where the money comes from and this is where the money goes. And the public can click on a line item and see exactly what composes that line item. They're going to be able to ask us to either increase, in which case, for example, if they want to increase this line item, it's going to show, it's going to put us in a deficit. If they want to decrease the line item, then all of a sudden you begin to have a surplus. They're able to submit a comment, of which it will come to the staff, we'll take that into consideration as we're budgeting, keep a log of those comments, that the public can, you know, have an idea of what people are saying out there. Our current, our current budget shows us we have $480 surplus, this is a balanced budget, basically. What, and this one is going to be previewed, they can't really mess with anything at this particular point. The 1617 budget, which is what we're going to begin working on, already shows us at a deficit, and I'll tell you why. It's because we are proposing a charter amendment that requires us to put $500,000 in reserve. That is not a bad thing. We, we're going to be able to manage the deficit within other portions of the budget, but the reserve is important so that our credit rating stays well, we can, you know, borrow money at less interest rates and eventually have a better saving long-term, as well as have our rainy day fund. But the same thing, on the revenue side, they can click the information, they can see what comprises that revenue, they can see any tax rate or legislative information that's responsible for that revenue source. So I want everybody to understand, a lot of times people go, oh, you can raise or you can lower. We're restricted in a lot of revenue items and expense items, either contractual obligations that we have, for example, with the chamber, or we have state limits on what we can charge, sales and use tax, hot tax, those kinds of things. So these are going to go live tonight, and the public, you know, will welcome the feedback. Those will go hand in hand with what I'm calling a budget fair, and every city department will have to manage a booth. And Eric doesn't know, but I'm about to give you a preview of the public safety budget. So the public safety budget is $990,000 to fire, and the police department makes up about 2.7% of that. So because Eric doesn't really raise a whole lot of revenue, it shows his budget to be in deficit, $3 million. We know the police department is in a deficit, but that $3 million has to come from somewhere, and it comes from permits and fees and other areas in the general fund. So the public's going to have an opportunity to review all of this information and give us their feedback. So my city manager friends tell me I'm crazy, but I've been called worse. The other item is, we were awarded a library grant. You'll see that information on your desk. It was given to us by the Talker Foundation. It is going to allow the library to convert all of our periodicals, all of our newspapers, and it was a total of $35,000. So thank you, Lil, for going out on her own, applying for that grant. And Brittany, who no longer is with the progress, trying to save all of those archives. We've also received notice from CenterPoint Energy, there's going to be an adjustment on their rates. I just want the public to know, the city has no say in the rate CenterPoint Energy charges, other than, you know, accepting the pastor. We don't add a surcharge or anything to that. I will also let the council know, as you're aware, we were issued a fine, as were our surrounding jurisdictions, for our wastewater treatment plant overflow that happened back latter part of last year. It is a fine amounting to approximately $10,000. We are working with TCEQ to be able to put that into our voluntary compliance program in other areas. So I don't want anybody to believe we're going to pay a fine to TCEQ, we're basically going to invest that money back into our improvement operations for our sewer and our treatment plants. And then I had another item, basically reminding folks that TML, reminding you our TML region is April 28th, our next meeting is April 28th. And then Mr. Condi has, he got up and spoke at public comment, this letter is in front of you, we did give him a welcome to Aransas Pass, we're here to help you hopefully get all your permits in place and operate a viable cruise ship industry out of our port or our surrounding jurisdictions. That's what I have today.
Sylvia, do you want to update the council on the industrial district?
Oh, correct, sorry, Alan. We are, I would venture to say about 70% done with signatures on the industrial districts, bless you, Phil. We are going to have to call a special meeting of the council, I'm hoping that would happen by next Monday, we'll let you know within the next coming days to move forward with those industries that have not decided to join the industrial district, and we'll move forward with annexation along some of those corridors. But at this particular point in time, it appears everybody is on board. They do start at 35% for larger industry and they cap at 70%, and there's a larger exemption for smaller industry that has gross revenues of less than $300,000. And of course, residential is exempted altogether.
As long as we make that clear.
Yes, residential is exempted altogether. And it's good to be back.
It's good to have you back.
So there's other letters that were lifted?
Sewer provided to me and a request to be given out to the city council. And as Mary just followed my wishes.
Okay, all right.
It's regarding a use, and at one, at some particular point in time, if we can't reach an agreement between staff and the affected property owner, it's going to go to either planning commissioner or zoning board of adjustment. If it goes to zoning board of adjustment and a ruling is issued and they appeal, it'll go to district court.
With that being said and done, that's going to bring us to item 17, the adjournment of the meeting. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion, adjourn? Second.
I don't have to argue with you.
We can bid.